We'd like to welcome everybody to the New Bern Board of Alderman Meeting at this time, if you would join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us tonight. Certainly, Lord, we are all in fear of what we're dealing with here and the unknown. And the unknown is where more than ever we need your protection and guidance. And we just ask that you wake us up to this morning, dear Lord, and we just, in our hearts, this is not a dream we're dealing with, it's a reality. And we implore your blessings and safety at this time. We know that you took Thomas and you took the down away from him. We know that in three days you roll a big rock back and you turn darkness of a Friday into the brightest Sunday. And, Lord, we just ask for unity amongst our city, our county, our nation, and the world at this time. And we just implore that we all have selfless acts of kindness at this time and service to our community. And we just ask that your mercy be upon all who are suffering at this time and heal them all, restore our lives and our lives of our countrymen. And that with these things, dear Lord, we just ask that we in turn, when this is over and everyone's cured and we're back to normalcy, that we are ever mindful of what we've been through and how much we really need you in our daily lives.
Please support.
And in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge allegiance to our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Let me have a third, you call the robe.
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris.
President.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
President.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Before we get started, I just want to, this is a little bit, a different type of meeting tonight, so some of the Alderman, all of the Alderman have been involved in the decision of how we can best be safe and in doing what we're doing, make sure that we're setting an example for our community. So, all the guidelines say stay a minimum of six feet to 10 feet. And so tonight, we're trying to do that. And I would like for Alderman to echo in on where we are, what we've done up till now before we get started on the meeting, and then some other comments we'll probably have on our new business. If anybody would like to say anything.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as this.
We can do that.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion. Anybody second that?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. So, part of what I was hoping some of the Alderman might want to chime in is that three of our Alderman are calling in from their homes tonight. To have a quorum, we need four members, elected members, to be present. So tonight, Alderman, Mayor approach him. Astor has not been demoted, he has just voluntarily decided to sit down at the table to be the six-foot distance. And so, again, we've, you know, we've thought about not having a meeting, that's, we can't serve the public if we don't have a meeting. So, we are asking that in any way the city can communicate with the community that we are always available on Facebook and on our PEG channel and our Public Information Officer, Colleen Roberts. And so, again, we're during this very difficult time, we're going to do whatever we need to do the right thing and to move our city forward. Any Alderman have any comments before we get going?
No, I think we're going to talk a little bit under new business. I certainly want to speak to the citizens and what we've been doing, what we're trying to do, and the importance of all of us working together and not against.
Okay. Any other Alderman?
I have some things I would like to say, but I will complete it under new business.
Okay. Any of the Alderman on the phone? Okay, so we've gone through the consent agenda, so at this time, we're going to go to item number 13, Mr. Stevens. And Mr. Stevens, do you have any comments? If you want to do it under your City Manager Report, or you want to do it now, again, I just want to make sure we're resonating to the public what's going on and how we're going to keep the government open here.
Sure, well, I'll handle those, some of those under our City Managers Report, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number 13 is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding for the administration and procedures of the Smithfield Agreement Environmental Enhancement Grant Program. As you can see, the city applied for a environmental enhancement grant through the North Carolina Attorney General's Office and has been awarded funding in the amount of $70,000. The funds will be utilized to support the remaining balance needed to develop a Resilience and Hazard Mitigation Plan. Memorandum of Understanding must be executed with respect to the administration procedures of this grant program. There's a memo that's included in your packet from our Community and Economic Development Manager, Amanda Olin-Salen, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, Mayor.
I just want to say, I thank everybody involved in this because this was not a for-sure bet we were going to get this grant. We certainly, again, in part of what we're doing with our resiliency study, we needed this and we were very fortunate to get it. And again, for everybody involved in the procedure to get awarded this grant, thank you so much for your dedication, hard work. Alderman?
Just a question for you, Mr. City Manager. So with this grant, which I'm so appreciative of, do we still have to appropriate, you know, we did a line item appropriation to make sure there were funds in that line item to cover this, but now that we've got the grant, can those funds be put back to the general fund?
Yes, ma'am, if they haven't been transferred yet, obviously, we will ensure that we're using grant funds first. But ultimately, we needed to do that to get the previous item approved so that we could go ahead and move forward with approving the RFQ and selecting our person to do the mofet nickel to do the actual plan document for us. This was kind of what I was alluding to, that was the announcement that we weren't able to make at the request of the North Carolina Attorney's Office until they were able to make that request. So this makes us whole as far as the full amount necessary for us to complete the Resilience and Hazard Mitigation Plan.
I guess what I'm saying is, we won't have to use any city funds, we're able to do this grant with all?
All the funds that we have, we have are through grant funds at this time, so we don't anticipate any further money being necessary from the proceeds that we talked about previously.
Okay, thank you.
So, the total funds was what, $145,000 we were seeking?
I think it was 140 was the contract, if I'm not mistaken. And the funds that we have are in excess of that, that I understand.
Thank you.
Because we were shooting for all along about $155,000 is what we were looking for, so.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding for the administration and procedures of the Smithfield Agreement Environmental Enhancement Grant Program.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion?
Second.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, great. Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, item number 14.
Thank you, Mayor, members of board. Item number 14 is an ordinance to amend Article III, City Water and Sewerage Systems of Chapter 74 Utilities. The city amended its ordinances in 1999 to prohibit the use of master water meters for multi-tenant residential and commercial establishments. Recent trends indicate there's a strong desire to have the ability to master meter the water services for these facilities. New Bern is one of the very few water systems throughout the state that does not allow master metering, and this has created hardships for some new developments. In order for us to better align our ordinance with the needs of the development community, we're recommending that this ordinance be amended to allow master water meters. There's a memo that's included from Mr. Hughes, City Engineer, of the proposed ordinance and the redlined version of the current ordinance and what will be changed. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I would ask some questions, but until this thing is actually implemented, I really don't know too much about the details and how it can be used. Obviously, it'd be useful more for apartments and the hotels and things like that. So could you just kind of talk a little bit about where you see this going as far as the implementation? I know there's some hardship cases in New Bern that some particular investors would be glad to see we have this.
Yeah, there's situations to where it can be beneficial for developers, especially multifamily-type construction, where it behooves the interest of the developer at that point to install a master meter versus individual meters throughout the entire complex. Obviously, you know, it affects us a little bit, probably minor effects as far as the connections and the usages and stuff like that, but ultimately, the water consumption's still going to be the same. It's just everything will be housed through a master meter, and then the actual developer of the property distributes that amongst their rent. And I don't know, Scott, I know you've had some discussions with Mr. Hughes as well and the developer group, but ultimately, that's the main reason for this and the fact that it allows just another option for a developer to, it's kind of a developer-friendly option for them to look at. It creates a little bit more work for them on the backside, but as far as upfront capital costs and the need for those, the master meter sometimes is a better way to go.
Well, the only thing, again, the concern I would point out in reading up on this is, the first time a tenant or an investor-owned condo unit or something within a building is not paying the water bill or however that those arrangements are going to be made, and then the master meter individual cuts that person off, they're going to be called to City Hall and wondering why their water's cut off. And we're not going to have anything to do with it. All the water we're going to cut off is that master meter. So when the guy about midway down the hallway gets his water cut off, you're going to be getting some phone calls. And so, the, yes, sir?
Yeah, Mayor, to your point, and that was, that's what caused us to change the old policy about 15 years ago to the individual meters. What we found, typically downtown, as downtown was being revitalized, folk would go into the older buildings, master meter the building, and then a year or two later, condominiumize the units and sell them off. So you had full-time residents living in some units, other units, folks only coming down for the summers or winters, yet the bills being divided. So we got a lot of complaints. So what this policy does is takes us to the non-individual, non-individually-owned residential units, basically apartment buildings. But if you're in a condo, townhouse, those are going to be individually metered. It's basically for apartments.
And the other flip of that pancake is that when the punctual solvent, 12 owners are paying their rent, their money in every month to whoever's got that master meter and he's not making a payment, and then that gets cut off, you don't have a lot of owners. So, I'm sure Mr. Hughes is prepared for all that, and I'm sure it won't happen, but...
Still got to ask those questions, I kind of...
It takes a big deposit, too, for this.
Big part?
It takes a big deposit for an apartment complex, we'll have a big deposit, I can assure you of that.
That may be the way to solve that problem, because you're right. It could be that, you know, the person gets cut off even though they're paying, and I guess in that case, they would be paying to the landlord.
Exactly.
Not necessarily. And, you know, in the case, I asked Jordan, I had a long conversation with him today, and we discussed something like the housing authority, you know, they have a master meter, and they have to because they pay for the utilities are included and they pay for that. So that's important as we are building more affordable housing, that may be an important component to affordable housing, that it's a master meter where their rent, their utility is included in their rent, so they're not having the burden of that separate one. But it's incumbent upon the owner, the keeper of the master, that would have to be on that. But I guess the remedy is large deposits and knowing who to go after.
Right.
Does this legally give the lesser the right to meter individual water meters on the other side of that master meter?
You can, but you cannot charge anything more than a very minor administrative fee. And that's what, that was the work around 20 years ago. You'd have a master meter at the street, and then sub-meters, and then all the condo owners would divvy up their internal meter readings and divide their money up internally.
Well, you know, because if there's not some type of metering on the other side of the master meter?
Right.
Then there's always somebody going to abuse it?
Exactly.
And use nine-tenths of the water?
Right.
But that's going to be somebody else's problem, not ours.
Exactly, yes.
Anyway, well, I think I've exhausted that discussion, so the board, whatever you want to do.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance to amend Article III to City Water and Sewerage System of Chapter 74 Utilities.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? See, and let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's go to appointments, starting with Alderman Bingle.
None tonight, sir.
Alderwoman Harris?
None tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Astor, Mayor approach to Astor.
None tonight.
Yeah, I have none. And Alderman Johnny Ray Kinsey?
I don't have any, sir.
Okay, and Alderman Barbara Best?
I don't have any appointments.
Alderman Jeffrey Odom?
None, sir.
Okay, let's go to the Attorney's Report.
None tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. City Managers Report.
Two quick items, Mayor. At the last meeting, the board asked for some clarification on the appointment of the Eastern Carolina Council of Governments Executive Committee appointment. Eastern Carolina Council has confirmed that the city's standing appointment to the general membership board, who's Alderman Kinsey, will now automatically roll to the executive committee. The city does not need to make an additional appointment at this time. However, at some point, his term will come up to expire, which he'll have to be reappointed or somebody else appointed towards that. So, but at this time, there's no additional appointment that's necessary. The second item that I had...
To be reappointed.
Sorry.
Judge Alderman Kinsey. Alderman Kinsey, go ahead.
I would like to be reappointed to the Carolina Council.
I think your appointment's still going to stand, Alderman Kinsey, until the point where that term expires. So this was just, you will be actually appointed to serve as well on the executive committee of the Eastern Carolina Council Board. Because of North Caro, I'm sorry, because of New Bern's population size, we were granted a spot on the executive committee based on their membership. So at that point, we will have a seat there, and you, as our representative for the Eastern Carolina Council, will serve on that executive committee.
Thank you, sir.
The other item, just real quickly, I think, Mayor, you wanted me to speak real briefly about...
Now, don't you speak as much as you want to, because it's going to be a long two weeks before next meeting.
Sure.
And I want to make sure anything associated with what this city and this nation is dealing with right now, that we thoroughly discuss it.
Sure.
And I know you've had quite a bit of conversation and...
There's been, there's been a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion, a lot of research. My staff continues to research daily, all the different things. As you can, as you know, the coronavirus, COVID-19, is an ever-evolving, ever-changing animal that we're dealing with here. This is not something where we have it down as a practice like hurricane. You know, we kind of have hurricanes down to where we know what to do and where some of our bad areas are going to be and how to approach it. But pandemics are a completely different situation. Obviously, we internally, within the city, have made some changes. Obviously, the City Hall, some of our public facilities, we have closed to the public unless necessary and if it's initiated by staff. If there's a necessary appointment, we had asked the individuals to reach out to 636-4000 and get ahold of the appropriate department and have that discussion with the appropriate department head or department at that time and determine, let them determine whether or not that's something that is, that warrants an in-person meeting. Otherwise, we're trying to handle as much as we can electronically, over phone, through emails, text messages, whatever it may be, for just normal business items. And it's worked quite well, to be honest with you. Not a lot of difficulties that we've seen, the biggest ones that we probably would have recognized, it would have been in the inspections Department and the Utility Business Office. And all of those, I spoke with Mary earlier in the week, and I spoke with Jeffrey Jerry yesterday, and all of those have gone very, very well. The number of permits right now actually is kind of down, as you would expect, the numbers of permits being pulled. I think Jeff said it's been running up in the lower 100s, 120, 125-ish range, it's down to about 75 now. So that's obviously some concern, but we can expect that probably over the next several months as far as, you know, declining work and things that are being done out in the field. But most of what is happening over in the inspections Department has been done well. There's a table out front that gives all the applications, all the information that any of the contractors may need, all the contact numbers. We're continuing to do inspections out in the field as we're called, continuing to do reviews as necessary. The Utility Business Office functions, everything's being handled through the drive-through window so, and/or by phone or email if they need arrangements or any kind of adjustments to any kind of people who may be behind in utility bills. So, all of those functions have been going quite well. There are a lot of the other areas, our public safety's continued to provide that service, obviously. We have cut down on some of our unnecessary phone, or calls to where, like the police department, obviously, if it's emergent needs or the fire department, if there's emergent needs for us to respond, we're doing that. For those that are non-emergent, we're categorizing those and depending on that, supervisors are making decisions at that point as to how to respond and the ways in which we do respond to those.
Mark, I just want to make sure, I want to reiterate in very, very simple, clear terms, that the city of New Bern is still open and operating. We are just operating in a electronic and voice manner over the phone, but I think there has been some confusion with these memos and things that the press releases, you know, Craven County is closed, city of New Bern is closed. Our buildings, in essence, are closed to the public because we are trying to practice social distancing and keeping people who may be carriers out. But the business of the city is still going on, you can still reach city employees and still do your business via phone or, you know, email or what have you. I just want to make sure we are reiterating that in very strong terms.
That...
Is that correct? If I'm not correct, then correct.
I don't think I need to reiterate it any better than what you just did. Essentially, we are open for business, we've been open for business, we do have our city offices closed, we're just, we're operating in a more electronic manner in order to adhere to the president and the governor's wishes as far as separation and limiting our contact, individual contact of people. Also, we are trying to not expose our staff. Obviously, if we have a, one person in the police department or fire department that potentially comes down, they could take out an entire shift just like that. So, we want to be able to continue to maintain and provide our normal business operations to every extent possible, and we're trying to do that as much as we can through electronic means. So we are open, there are people physically in the buildings. Now, that's not to say at some point, we may need to make aggressive moves as far as teleworking. We have explored those options, we have the capability of doing that for some departments and some staff. There are those options there, we've explored it, and staff are prepared for it. Also, you know, we...
But at this point, you don't need to, you feel like everybody is separated enough that they're safe?
I think at this point, yes. If we started having cases more rampant in the New Bern area or internally within our own organization, then at that point, we may consider some alternative measures. But at this point, right now, we're not seeing that. We are taking precautions in certain situations where there may be some potential exposures, and we're taking those very aggressive steps into, you know, even if an employee is coming down with a cough and may have a fever and they don't know whether it's the flu or strep throat or, you know, coronavirus, then we're sending them home if they come into work. Or we're asking employees not even come into work, honestly, just call in and we'll work around it. But that's essentially the case of where we are internally and we're still operating. We have took, we have taken some extra measures, we've closed some of our city playgrounds, not the parks themselves, but the playgrounds, i.e. the swing sets, the Kidsville 2.0, areas like that where children and people, adults can, I guess, congregate in some way, that could potentially expose people further to the virus. So that's something, some of the actions that we're doing in some of our public parks, we want people to get outside and to enjoy themselves. It's a time where people can actually, if they're not working, they can recreate, they can do those sorts of things, but they still need to practice those measures of social distancing and keeping their distance from people. And by allowing playgrounds and things like that, that does become a problem. So we have taken those steps. As far as, just kind of an update, with the executive orders of the governor, the governor has issued, obviously, restrictions on certain businesses. Those have come out in Executive Orders 115 through 120, I believe. I would urge everyone to go, if they have questions, to go to the governor's website. It's, you can search "North Carolina Governor" and go to his individual website with the state of North Carolina's organizational, I guess, website. You can actually go under his stuff and read all of those executive orders, you can download them if need be. But lately, the latest one that come out was 120, Executive Order 120, and that one basically shut down a lot of different things such as hair salons, nail salons, barber shops, theaters, tattoo parlors, sweepstakes locations. All of those will become effective tomorrow. So all of those should be closed at the end of business, I think at 5:30 PM, starting tomorrow, I believe is the time and date. We did have a conference call with the governor today, kind of updated, this was at 2:30 today. There were 398 confirmed cases, and that's the DHHS, Department of Health and Human Services number, across 49 different counties. The governor did indicate that most likely, he expected all counties by the end of the week to probably have a case within their county.
Could you just, I'm sorry, interrupted, I just want to make sure, correct information too, because I was on that phone call. 398, when you look, if you go online, you look at our statistics, you see a number 400, a little over, you know, 420 maybe. But I understand that as people pass the two weeks, if they were confirmed case, they pass the two weeks, no more symptoms, that number is reduced, is that correct?
I think that number would be, I'm not real sure whether that's the actual number from the state that says that this is the actual cases that we have, or if it's the actual still active cases. I haven't been able to determine that on the...
I was just, that number confused me because 398 was lower than what I had seen.
Yeah, well, I would advise everyone, this would be my advice, is utilize appropriate websites that we have put on our website for people to go to to look for their information. CDC, Department of Health and Human Services, those are the two websites that we recommend that people go to. They're the ones that are going to have the most accurate information. Now, with that in mind, the Department of Health and Human Services for the state of North Carolina, they only report and update that number once per day. So that number adds up, like I said, 2:30 PM, the governor stated it was 398 cases, but he expects that to continue to grow. And that's across the state of North Carolina, as we've seen in other states, you know, that number has grown very, very rapidly. He indicated too, that this is a, it's a very dangerous virus, especially for those who are elderly. 20% of the cases that they're seeing for this particular virus are resulting in hospital visits. And that's obviously concerning with the fact of we have a limited resource there. It's a limited resource and availability of folks who are our nurses and our doctors and our healthcare workers. So if we continue to not heed the warnings of social distancing and not going to public places and things like that, then ultimately, it will overrun the system, and then those who need assistance and help will not be able to get it because the system will be overburdened at that point. They recommend that 60, those who are 65-plus, the high-risk condition folks with lung, heart, immun, with lung, heart, cardiovascular diseases, immune-compromised systems, diabetes, asthma, all of those are considered to be in that high-risk condition category, along with those who are 65 or older, and that they should probably stay at home as much as they possibly can. The other guidance that they're getting from the CDC is, if you do feel that you have symptoms, stay home, call your doctor, and allow your doctors to determine based on your symptoms whether or not you need to be tested. I know Craven County has set up some testing sites, so our recommendation would be is to call the health department for Craven County or your doctor that you have, your family doctor, and contact them regarding your symptoms and seek the guidance that they have as a professional as to what you should do. But that is the guidance that we got from the governor today at our 2:30 conference. call. There were some additional things that were shared as well, but I just wanted to kind of hit some of the highlights. Happy to answer any other questions the board has, but internally, we're still working and still day-to-day evaluating the situation that we have. If we need to open up or enact a full-blown EOC, we're totally prepared to do so.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way that we can post some of that information off the website and as well as on the TV?
Pretty much everything that I have stated to this point is available as a resource on our website. All of the links to the Department of Health and Human Services links are on there to give you up-to-date numbers. And most, everything that we have regarding proper hygiene practices, proper distancing requirements, everything is already posted and running on our website, our social media as well as on the PEG channel.
As it says, along with the information, keep everybody abreast, correct?
Yes, as much as people want to allow themselves to be kept abreast, we are updating that and we're submitting, we're sending out on a regular basis through Facebook and social media updates as to our offices opening. I know Alderman Bingle just mentioned this a few minutes ago regarding some concerns of that. Colleen has done a very good job this week and late last week in highlighting every single one of our, or almost every single one of our offices that are publicly facing and ensuring the public, here's how you can still contact us, we're still operating, we're still functioning and providing service.
And that is also in the newspaper as well?
I don't know that we've actually put stuff out in the newspaper, but...
No, no, about the city's operations, meetings, councilings and all that, it's in the newspaper. I've seen it in the newspaper.
Yeah, it's been posted in the newspaper. That was, yeah, about a week ago.
Well, thank you, Mark. It's a lot of work. It's very difficult and it's very hard what's going on right now, but we have to stand strong and stick together and work hard so we can see our way through this.
Yes, sir. And let me also reiterate one thing. You know, we as a city are trying to provide the resources, the education, the information and the websites where you can obtain information as much as we can. But the city does not have a health department. The city does not have pandemic epidemiologists that are on staff, that are paid, things like that. So we're taking the guidance of the CDC, the governor and our local health department director, who is Scott Harrelson with Craven County, regarding actions that we are trying to enact with the city and as far as guidance goes with regards to this pandemic. So while I know there's a lot of questions that are out there, we're happy to try to answer as much of them as we can, but we're not the professionals in this expertise or in this field of epidemiology and pandemic outbreaks. But we're utilizing our resources through Health and Human Services at the state level as well as the county health director and the CDC.
Okay, you got anything else under city manager's report?
I think that'll do it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Let's go to do business, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Well, the only business right now is that there is no business. There's no business in our downtown, there's no business in our city, and I've been working really hard in trying to navigate along with the Chamber of Commerce, Swiss Fair, the Lieutenant Governor, House of, North Carolina House Representative Jason Sane, who's the Chair of the Appropriations Committee, anybody I can talk to in trying to find out resources to help benefit our businesses. Of course, the hardest-hit industry is the industry I'm most close to, and that's the tourism industry. All our attractions are shut down, our convention center is closed, our hotels are having occupancy of 10 and 15%, and our restaurants have lost virtually 75% of their business. But this is a time for us not to complain, it's not a time to point fingers at anybody, and it's not a time for people to tell us how to run our businesses. We know what we need to do, we know how to do it. We just need the resources to do it. I'm sure now the hair salons and the others that have been closed down will be experiencing what we have experienced for the last week. So what resources are out there? We have SBA, which you can go online. They have relaxed some of the stringent regulations, but I'm telling you, it's labor-intensive. And yesterday, I was in a meeting for an hour, a virtual meeting with Lieutenant Governor Dan Forrest and 12 other restaurateurs across the state of North Carolina. And we talked about the biggest hurdle, and one was the bureaucracy of a SBA loan. It is difficult at best, but I still recommend you go online and look at it. The Rural Center has now opened up with some grants, so I suggest, again, we'll put that information out there. I know the city manager shared that with me. There is also loans or loans available through Golden Leaf. Golden Leaf got millions of dollars appropriated, I think 50 million, that you can apply for. Go online, again, apply for it. It's not as restrict or, you know, hard to fill out as an SBA loan, but it's there. When it comes to unemployment, please urge all of your employees to go and file for unemployment. It will not come back against the employer, even if you were part-time, if you are still working some hours, not your normal schedule, you can file for unemployment. They have waived the one-week wait period and they have waived the looking-for-a-job requirement so that you can file for unemployment. Again, restaurateurs, we talked with Lieutenant Governor to see if we couldn't some way access our own unemployment pockets that we all have as businesspeople to see if we could immediately use that and then just have the feds reimburse it. We are working to try to find these things. But I think the biggest issue I find is that most of us kind of feel defeated right now. And that's a really bad feeling to have as a business owner, that you've worked so long and you feel so defeated. I feel, I personally feel defeated because I have 50 people that depend on me for a paycheck every week. And that means they can't pay their rent, they might not be able to feed their families, they can't go about their lives every day, and I feel that impact. And I'm one of many, many businesses in this town who feel this way. Some have chosen to close, some have stayed open to try to get something in the way of takeout, delivery, whatever. So I get concerned when I hear people forcefully telling me, everything needs to be closed, shut down, nobody should be going anywhere, nobody should be doing anything. I'm concerned because there are people who need to do something. I agree that we should have social distance. I agree that if you are sick, you should stay home. I agree if you are compromised with your health or in any way, shape at home, you should stay at home. And I believe that's what we should follow, a stay-at-home policy, not a mandatory shutdown policy. I know there's been talk of it. I've had several citizens reach out to me. I've done my best to try to respond to our citizens the best I can via email, Facebook, text. But I implore our citizens to not point fingers at anybody, not listen to this one and that one, you hear this on the TV, that TV. If you have a question, ask us. Our city manager has made himself available to this board 24/7. And Mark, I really want to thank you because he has been Johnny-on-the-spot. I had a question, I've texted him, I've called him. I mean, you know, Alderman Best and myself and Alderman Harris were in a conversation with him yesterday and he was very responsive to the things we were asking. And we are doing everything as a city. I had someone, you know, post something not very nice about our parking requirements downtown and really, you know, beating us up. And I just decided I had enough. And I said, why are you beating us up? Don't do it. We're suffering as bad as you all are suffering. We're doing the best we can. If you have a problem, pick up the phone and call. Any one of the Aldermen you see here or on the phone will respond to you, will get you the answer you need, will try to help you. But beating up on us is not what we need right now. We shouldn't be beaten up on any elected officials. This is very trying, this is very stressful because either we have businesses or we know people who have businesses who are struggling right now. And I am concerned. I think we as a city are so good at coming together and helping one another. I see Ms. Sampson here in office saying, I mean, God bless you, you know, these are the people we're asking to stay home. And she walked up our steps to be in this meeting because it's important for the public to know we are doing the business of the city. But she's got a box at the corner of Sampson and K and it says, if you need something, take something. If you have something, give something. And the box was full of, I don't know, food and other things that people might need. We need those boxes all over town, Ms. Sampson. God bless you, thank you for doing that. But it's another, just another way that New Bernians help New Bernians. You know, we just, we are a community of loving people, but we're also a community of people who want to fuss, and now's not the time for fussing. We're not perfect. I don't always make the right decisions. I do my best. Our whole board, I believe, feels that way. I don't think anybody does anything to go out to try to hurt anybody. But we are trying our best downtown and, you know, I'm doing what I can to assist our businesses. I'm working with the chamber on a regular basis to get any, you know, information they need. I'm contacting our elected officials. I'm trying to go on as many phone calls. I was on the phone call with the governor today that Mark referred to. Anything that we can do to help our citizens is what I'm going to be doing, business or otherwise. But please, if you don't feel good, stay home. If you feel safer staying home, then stay home. There are some people that can't stay home because that paycheck may mean the difference in keeping a roof over somebody's head or food in their bellies. Now, we're all trying to help do these things, but please be patient with everybody and let's do the best. That's my, that's my new business. But I did have one other question for you, Mr. Stevens. I am getting some questions about the utility bills. I know that what we did in our consent agenda was waive the restrictions and waive some of that, the penalties. If people need help with the utility bills, is our roundup program still available? Is there money in there to help people? How are we going to, you know, as people come and say, you know, hey, I don't, I can't, I can't do this, I hadn't gotten a paycheck or whatever, how are we going to handle it? Do we know yet what we're going to do?
I will tell you, I'm not positive on the roundup program. I know that was a certain amount of money that was allocated and I think it was hurricane relief-related at that time, but I can follow up on that. As far as utility bills go, obviously, we took the action tonight. We have kind of put a stay on any kind of disconnects. We're waiving late penalties as far as the late penalties go if people are having hardships as far as making their payments. And we're also working with people as far as payment arrangements. I urge anyone who is having those troubles to call 252-639-2750, that is our utility business office number, and work with our staff. Our staff are trained to work with individuals who are having difficulties in making their utility payments. The last thing that we want to do is cut off folks and quite frankly, we've put a stay on that. So we want, you're still going to be required to make those payments at some point because we cannot statutorily just forgive money that's owed. But we can work with you in a way that will allow you to bridge this gap of time where you could potentially be unemployed or having difficulties with making decisions on whether or not you should buy groceries to feed your kids or keep the lights on. So those are the things that we're working through and I urge anyone who is having trouble to please call that number, 252-639-2750. That's our utility business office staff and they will work with you on your payment arrangements.
Thank you. I think I said enough.
Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just gonna piggyback off a lot of what Alderman Bingle said. My main concern right now is to make sure that we as a community and as a city continue to practice the social distancing and only going out if needed, if you're an essential employee. If you're not, please stay home. And if there's anybody that needs anything from me and more too, please reach out to me via phone number or email because I'll be able to assist you. And I just hope and pray everyone continues to stay safe and stay healthy.
Okay, thank you so much. May Protem Asher.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mark, I also would like to just thank you very much for keeping us abreast on everything that's going on. It's nice to get these updates and I've been taking a lot of your updates and spreading them out on my Facebook page just to my homeowners association president. So it's good information and thank you very much. I would like to, just a quick update on Old Airport Road since Matt's not here, but everything from Evans Mill back towards Carolina Colors is near complete, looks nice. And then from Carolina Colors up to Taberna, construction is taking place in there today. They were moving some utility lines, the contract's been let and that work will be taking place shortly. I also would like to inform everyone that lives in the Colors and Evans Mill area that I had conversation with the North Carolina Department of Transportation as well as with Denny Booker today. And they have told us that they will be making modifications to the intersection of Thurman Road and 70 East within the next 30 days to give the dedicated lanes and turn lanes out of both sides of Thurman Road. And that was a blessing to hear that. There's been a lot of accidents up there and I'm grateful for North Carolina DOT for taking that action. And that's all I have, Ms. Mayor.
Chief, I know you're having some issues over there with postal, post office situation and also the second phase of internet provider. So in any way I can help you, the manager?
Well, actually, we resolved the post office issue today.
Great, great.
And I've been in contact with, is it Erin Jones with Altis? Yeah, Erin Jones today and she's going to check to see, you know, the problem is that we have, the children have to have internet to be able to do their schoolwork. And, you know, so she's going to check on the other areas back there in Bluewater Rise that has not had, does not have the internet hooked up and see if she can get something taken care of quickly.
Right.
So we're on top of it.
I knew you were on top of it. Alderman, Johnny Ray Kinsey.
Thank you. Mark, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you've put out to help to provide and share information. And the school system is doing a great job as well as going out feeding families and kids. That's been a very big help to the community. And I'd like to see everyone to follow instructions. Please stay home if you're sick. If you have an elderly person that lives near you that needs help, try to assist them if you can. Try to follow all the instructions that is given to us because it's so very important that we all stay healthy as long as we can to be able to hit one another. If you feel you're not doing well, stay home. Please do that. And that's all I have to say tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Alderman, Barbara Best.
Mark, I too want to thank you especially for updating us with all the information that you sent us and to getting it out to my constituents through social media as well. And I also, I would like to thank our employees, especially the central personnel, those that serve our city, the police and the fire and first responders because they come in contact daily with citizens. So, you know, I just, you're truly praiseworthy and you have a hard job because you're out there in the public and we want you to stay safe as well. And I know a lot of you have families and elderly people in your family and we have, we as a board and as a city, we need to listen to what our governor say that is most important for us as a city to appear by. We, and I know we, a lot of restrictions have been put on us, but if we want to get ahead of this virus, if we want to avert this virus, we have got to stay our distance, we have got to stay home. And I understand, you know, that we still do have our families to feed, but if you don't have to go out, don't go out. But if you don't have to go out, don't go out. But if you have to go to work, you have to go to work because you have to feed your family. But please, if we as a city, as well as other counties and cities and state and as a nation, don't listen to the skilled, trained healthcare providers that is releasing this information to us and we don't appear to it, then we're putting ourselves in danger and we're putting other people in danger. So we have got to do that. Um, I do want to, um, to know, to let, I, I have a question here. And I was on the call trying to, um, Senator Tillis and, um, Congressman Murphy had a, also had a telecom communication. And I tried to get through because it was questions that I really wanted to ask because I've had some of my constituents reach out to me and ask that the monies that the government is going to give to the families, the 1,200 per person household and the 500 for the children, for each child, that, I got that question answered. That, that is not going to be a loan to the people. It is going to be a credit. So the, the people will not have to pay that money back. Now, that is, but all of these, all of this money coming from the government and the government is hopefully when that bill gets passed.
If it gets passed.
That bill gets passed, the monies that's gonna be going to our working families and families in need will be a credit, but that will also be a debt to the government. So I just want, uh, like I said, I had some customer, some constituents ask me that. So, you know, for those of us listening, it would not be a loan. It, it will be classified as a credit. Also, um, I had another question. There are a lot, there are a lot of banks, businesses giving millions and millions of dollars. And I wanted to know how that money is going to trickle down to the counties, to the states, to the counties? Or how is that money gonna be getting to those working families' hands, the ones that really needs it? Is it gonna be left up to the state? Is it gonna be left? How, where's that money gonna go? Who's gonna receive that money? I do know some say that nonprofits will receive some of this money. So, and, and when you say nonprofits, I'm thinking, is it Salvation Army, RCS, uh, religious? Uh, where is this money going? How are our working class people that's out of jobs right now, how are they gonna be able to obtain some of those funds? Does anybody have, has anybody been asked that question?
It's all up in the air right now because the bill has not been passed and until...
No, 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 no. I'm talking about for as, there's banks, uh, bit, large businesses are giving millions of dollars. And I know some of them said that the funds are going to nonprofits. So I, I don't...
But I don't know if they have to apply for them, just like there's many things for businesses right now. The Rural Center, the SVA, um, the Golden Leaf. And you have to go online. You have to, and, and they have a section for nonprofits. They have a section for profitable businesses. And you have to go in there and fill it out and there's different terms for the different, you know, groups. So I guess...
I guess that's a question I'm gonna probably have to...
It doesn't automatically come, I think. You have to apply for it and go through a process.
Okay. I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think Wells Fargo was one of the banks. So I'm, I, I guess I need to contact Wells Fargo to see how are they gonna do to, um, the millions that they're giving to the communities? Whose hands are they putting those millions into?
I mean, they could individually have a foundation.
Right, exactly.
This is hard to say. I mean, like, uh, years ago when we set up, um, the roundup program, we did that through RCS. So again, it just depends on the organization, if they have a foundation or... Margaret, you having any, any, uh?
My, my thinking is that...
Could you come up to the mic, please?
This is Margaret Shields who does quite a bit of grant writing.
My thought is that it's going to go to these different banks, foundations, and that it will be the same sort of grant process that they've had. They're, they're just gonna have more money to allocate for probably those kinds of charities and nonprofits that are doing humanitarian sorts of work in their communities.
Okay. And then of course, the actual, the citizen can go and apply for those funds through that organization or through that grant process?
Depending on what the criteria is, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Uh huh.
Thank you, Margaret.
And that's basically all I, I have. I just, everyone be safe and, and we got to listen to our governor and we got to listen to our healthcare providers and, and take heed to what they're saying so that we can keep this virus from coming into our county, to our city.
Alderman Best, I will commit, um, as I hope you would, or the rest of our board of Aldermen, as we're getting all this information and we do that, either we channel it to our city manager to send to all of us or make sure we're all in the loop because it's almost overwhelming. There's so much information out there now. It would be good if maybe even the city manager can collect it all that if we had a question, we could, because he's been sending a lot of these, uh, as he sees them, to our emails. And so we could help our citizens because I know they're looking to us for some of these answers. Would be helpful if we knew that.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Jeffrey Odom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to make my comments brief. Um, I don't like conference calls in my day job and, uh, they're challenging when you try to participate via conference call at a meeting such as this. But I appreciate both our citizens' patience as well as all of our staff and, and board and fellow board members' patience as we work through this unknown time. Um, there is one thing that I do think is worth repeating and that's the thank you to, uh, Mr. Stevens as well as the rest of our staff. I think you've done a great job at keeping us all informed and the communication flowing, uh, amongst staff and board. I also want to extend, uh, a sincere appreciation to our counterparts on the county commission board. Um, they are the governing body when it comes to health-related issues such as what we're dealing with right now. And I know that there's a lot of overlap with some concerns about things that may come out. Um, I had someone call and ask me what's gonna happen if my garbage and recycling stop getting picked up. And, you know, the answer is, well, the city will have to address the garbage and the county will have to address the recycling. And there's a lot of things that are in that particular situation. But from a healthcare standpoint, the county commissioners and Craven County is the governing authority. So if you have questions regarding those issues, then I would highly recommend you reach out to that entity when you have those questions to get the most up-to-date and accurate answers. Um, one of the most fearful things that anybody experiences is the fear of the unknown. And that is what COVID-19 has brought, is a sense of unknown to this nation and this world. And, uh, unfortunately, we're not gonna have answers tomorrow. And I know that there's a lot of concern on behalf of folks. Um, there's about half the people think that everything should shut down and about half the people think that if you do that, then that's gonna be the end of the world. Um, and I think we have to, as leaders, find that balance and mix in between the two. Um, what there is known is the fact that there are over 30 million small businesses in the United States of America and they employ about 48% of all the jobs in this country. And the average net profit margin of a small business ranges anywhere between 8 and 12%. So you can do the math, um, that one month's worth of revenue is a profit for a small business. And a small business that is out of business for a month is essentially bankrupt. And the devastation that that would have on this nation is unfathomable. So what I would encourage people to do is exercise personal responsibility. That is what this country is built upon. It's not built upon a government bureaucrat telling you how to run your life. And I would encourage people to heed the warning, stay home if you're sick. Make sure, use hand sanitizer, use proper social distancing, use the tools and the, the things that have been offered to us as far as how we should be operating and living our lives while we work through this virus. And I just want to hopefully issue some sort of encouragement to everyone, uh, both the 50% that feel one way and the 50% that feel the other way. Um, I quickly learned in this job, you're not gonna make everybody happy. Um, and I know that there's some folks that want some action to be taken and there's a lot of folks that don't want action to be taken. At this point in time, it's important that we support our fellow neighbors. We follow the warnings given out by the CDC and the other governing medical authorities. We all work together and not point fingers. And I appreciate the time. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I, I just have one more thing, Mr. Mayor. Um, I learned tonight, just before the meeting, that there's a lot of scamming going on right now too. And I would just warn our citizens, um, that if someone calls you and says that they can sell you a test kit or if they want to sell you some health insurance or something like that, just be careful with the information you give out over the telephone. You know, there's a, the, most of the ones that are asking for the, um, test kits, asking for social security numbers. Uh, there would be no reason why you should give your social security number to anybody over the telephone. So I just wanted to warn people that unfortunately, there's some people in this world that take advantage of the times that we're in and, uh, they're out there right now.
You can go to the, oh, you can go to the North Carolina Attorney General's website and they have a number there where you can report anybody if you think you've been scammed or somebody is gouging something as well.
And also I was wanting to piggyback on what you're, um, just stated, um, Alderman Astor. There are also scams going out and saying that, they're calling people and saying that they can get them their money faster from the government. So that was another one that was, that, that was on television as well.
And to answer your question about Wells Fargo, while you were talking, I was just on the web and looking there. If you go to wellsfargo.com, under the community grant program or something, you can click on North Carolina and it gives you the email address and how to apply for any funding through that, that program.
Thank you.
Okay, on, uh, new business before we finish up tonight, I would like to recognize Reverend Ethel Sampson and you, very nice write-up in the Sun Journal recently about you and your many accomplishments. So, uh, congratulations to you. And I certainly would like to, well, uh, thank all the staff, the city of New Bern, from the city manager down for your dedication during these very trying times. The, uh, the virus does not start and stop at the county line or the city line. For that reason, uh, under new business, I did want to mention that I think i- i- in review of watching and, and looking at what other cities are doing as far as mayors writing letters and things, I feel that the city is doing an excellent job of communicating via the Facebook and the PEG channel and other medium that we're doing. So from that standpoint, uh, I noticed that Charlotte's fixing to come out with an announcement. And certainly cities like New Bern, all the way up to Charlotte, are high-density areas versus the more rural areas of North Carolina. So the dynamics of, of a virus in a given area like the state of New York, which is, has got some, uh, uh, some real serious issues with the curve at this time. So I'm looking for the leadership of the county and the commissioners. I've been on the phone twice today with Chairman Tom Mark. There are some rumors out there of some things the city of New Bern is gonna do. But we are looking at our county health director and the county itself to provide the holistic needs of our community. So, uh, uh, I just want to mention that if there's, if any of the Aldermen feel any different about that, we need to talk about that now before another meeting two weeks from now. So I've, I've looked at some letters. I think, um, Mayor Lewis Over in Pavlov wrote a very nice letter, um, making some communications available to the citizenry. But when I, when I read this letter and looked at what we already have in place, uh, uh, I feel like the city of New Bern already has many of those tools. And, um, Chief Astor, you, with your big back, your background as fire chief, do you have any recommendations that are, any of the rest of the Aldermen that we need to do, uh, at this point for better communication with the citizenry?
Hmm, I, I think, I think doing what we're doing and sending out as much information. Mark's doing an excellent job keeping us abreast, keeping the community abreast. Uh, and the only thing that I would say to the community is just to, to monitor, um, what your local officials are saying and to abide by what they are requesting you to do.
So, and to that, because about half of the population of the county is centered around the radius of New Bern, um, it's important that the city receive, and complimenting the county, we, we need that back in the form of, of on-the-hour communication, if anything's changing or if they're considering making any moves, we, you know, the way it would affect the city of New Bern or Trent Woods or, or Bridgestone James City or River Bend might be a little different from the furthest rural areas of the county. So, um, I certainly hope we can continue to have really good communication with our county, county leaders, our health director, et cetera, where we can, they can keep us right on top of, of things as they change. Because, uh, I know that early on I thought about, um, getting on Facebook and, and making some announcements, but that they're changing so quickly. By the time I would get on Facebook and, and make any type of, uh, uh, any communication, it, it would have already changed. So the best thing I know, and Alderman Bangle, I think you can chime in here, that from the CD, uh, from the Center for, uh, for Disease, Atlanta, CDS and, uh, our health director and all the other mediums that we have, uh, that's where we need to be. The CDC, we need to be looking for, um, the answers.
I think it's important that our citizens just know that right now, we're taking the lead from our governor, our county and our governor, and we're not trying to act unilaterally. I think it would be not in the best interest of our citizens for us to go out and act on something that is not in coordination with our county and our governor. So therefore, you know, I, I will wait. The governor was on the phone today. I don't believe he mentioned anything about a total shutdown or anything like that at this point. But again, I want to work with the county and the governor's office as far as what they think is in the best interest for our part of North Carolina. I totally understand Charlotte, Durham, Mecklenburg. I mean, that's where they're seeing some large rises of numbers. And I certainly understand New York. I mean, my, my family's in total lockdown right now. And, uh, I, I certainly understand that. But I want to take the lead from the county and the governor.
Yeah. Well, and, and with me at this point, you know, I don't want to give anybody any misleading information. So the peo, the constituents and people that are actually calling me and emailing me, I'm referring them over to the different websites, like you said, the CDC, Craven County, where they can get, you know, the governor's office and all of those, where they can get updated information, which is information that will be accurate for them and not information come from me. So I don't want to give anybody any misleading information. So that's what I've been, uh, giving out to the, the individuals and citizens that's been contacting me.
I, I wanna tiptoe through the tulips for just a second and mention one term that the public's gonna hear tomorrow or two weeks from now or whenever. But I want to make sure that we give the public as much notice as far as the definition, et cetera. But there is no agenda on the part of the city of New Bern that I'm aware of to start a shelter in place. Um, you know, if you're in a building division, the development services of New Bern, and you're gonna get a permit, that's the minimal standards of building a home. Doesn't mean it's the maximum. It's the minimal standards of building a home. And similarly, wha- whatever our health director is saying, those are kinda like the minimal guidelines as how each individual and their family should decide what they want to do as far as, in the best interest of their family. So from that, um, there are counties that are moving to the shelter in place. And that pretty much sounds to me like if you get the broad definition of it, that the only essential things like emergency needs for medical service or getting provisions, going to the, to the grocery store, those are the, the very limited things. And Mr. Stevens, you can help me out if you, if, uh, or if you want to stay out of that definition, that's good too. But, you know, I hope that we don't get to that point. But the, the problem is, is if all of our citizenry do not participate in this event as where we are right now, uh, the more we do not react in the, in a prudent manner as to how we govern our own lives and our neighbors, then the government's gonna do it for us. And so, do you have anything to add to that? I know that some county, I think Pitt County went to shelter in place. Is that correct? And there's several counties are doing that. And, and I'm not for sure what are not gonna happen.
Greenville didn't do it. So there's, there's some back and forth.
Well, see, that's, that's what...
So that's the problem. So that's the problem.
I do not want to see that in Crane County. I do not want Havlock, New Bern, Vanceville, Cozy, Dover.
Right, I agree.
You know, doing different things. We all are gonna do it under the umbrella of the county, I hope.
I agree, I agree.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I will say, and, and quite frankly, again, Pitt County acted upon the direction of the local health director and the folks at the hospital and their recommendations. And that's how we are looking to move forward as well, is at the direction of our county health director, Scott Harrelson, and also our governor. I will say that, you know, a lot of, a lot of municipalities are, or I wouldn't say a lot, but there's only three that I know of, Pitt County, the city of, town of Beaufort, and Charlotte Mecklenburg right now. And there is one in way western part of the state, I think, that, that shut down, so four, that have kind of shut down to some extent and shelter in place. What, what I would say is, is Mayor, is, is that, you know, for, for us, there's a lot of, of thought process that goes through that. Y'all employ me to think ahead and to look at those things and have my staff prepared. So we have obviously looked at and are prepared to act in whatever way is necessary for us to do and carry out those actions should the governor and, or the, the local health director direct us to do those things. But when that happens, we, we will act. But otherwise, we're stand-ready to provide them with whatever resources necessary and provide y'all as much information as you can so you make educated decisions. Obviously, you know, you've heard the president come out and say also that, you know, he hopes that the United States will be back open and operating by April the 12th. So obviously, there's concerns with shutting things down and how it slows the economy and, and how the economy drives the success of this country. So it, it's a very delicate balance and it's a very thin line that we're operating in right now and it's changing all the time. It's wavering back and forth as far as what needs to be taken as far as action, but also what actions don't need to be taken so that we ensure that this economy is safe.
Mayor, I'm not saying one more. But since Mr. Stevens, you did highlight on, we're talking about Pitt County, I think if y'all have a little time on your hands, to go in and look at Pitt County, Craven County Board of Commissioners meeting, their March 23 meeting. They had, as Mark said, they had the CEO of Vital Healthcare, Dr. S, I think, what was his name, Sivrenol and another doctor there, and they gave a great presentation on this COVID-19 virus. And I think it was really enlightening to me. So, you know, if you've got time to go and, and view that, this Craven County, I mean, Pitt County Commissioners meeting, it was very, very enlightening. They gave some very vital information and, and I think a lot of people need to see that, that meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you. What else at this time? Any, any more new business before we move on? Do we need a closed session tonight? Is there any other business to come before the Board of Aldermen at this time?
May I ask to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. The meeting is adjourned. Everybody be safe.